Don't, period. Alrighty, certification of the executive meeting. Whereas the Brunswick County School Board has convened an executive meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Brunswick County School Board that such executive meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Brunswick County School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only if public business matters were lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in the executive meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Brunswick County School Board. All members in favor, please respond by saying yea. Any opposed, nay.
Yea.
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 Thank you. Alrighty, whew, thank you, thank you, thank you. I'd like to say, take this time out to say thank you all to coming back out and for our first meeting of the twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Brunswick County School Board year. It is definitely, I am excited and indeed delighted to see, to steal a page from Dr. Thornhill's book, to see all of you here tonight. Welcome, 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 and I hope this is an amazing, amazing school year, and a school year built off of excellence, because that is our foundation. We ask that you all please silence your cell phones, your smartwatches, and any other devices, your Androids which aren't so smartphones. Sorry, Mr. Mays.
We be seated.
As we began this meeting. Alrighty, if the officers here may need to be walked to my car. Alrighty, we would now call the meetings to order, and Ms. Claire, will you please take a roll call attendance? Mrs. Seward. Present.
Mr. Warwick.
Present.
Dr. Burns.
Here.
Ms. McMillan.
Present.
Mr. Perrier.
Present.
Alrighty, thank you. Moving right along with our agenda, school board members, we've had an opportunity to review the agenda, and I will take a motion that we approve or amend the agenda as presented.
Madam Chair, I move that we amend the agenda to remove item F under action for further discussion.
Alrighty, there's a motion that we remove item F under action for further discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and properly second that we remove item F from the agenda for further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying yea.
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 Any opposed? Yes, have it, the motion carries. Thank you. Alrighty, this is the fun part. We're going to start with our pledge of allegiance, and then we'll move down to a moment of silence, followed by our mission and vision. All those who can stand, we ask that you please stand at this time. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As you're seated, we'll have a brief moment of silence. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to, if you don't mind, I hate to back up for a minute, but where I approve of our agenda, I'd like to change mine to a no vote on the agenda, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
Noted. Our mission, within a safe and supportive environment, we provide every student with a strong education that will enable them to be productive citizens who are college and career ready, and able to compete in an ever-changing world. Our vision, educating students, inspiring success, and improving tomorrow. Alrighty, Dr. Carter, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayers, you able to pull up the slide deck and board, if you'll excuse me? I'm going to move around to the podium.
Absolutely.
I just prefer to be able to see you when I'm addressing you.
Absolutely.
So, I'll be brief with this, but the majority of the information that I'll present for superintendent's comments is just a pouring out of thank you to the board for support, the greater community, and everyone on our team. So, pre-service, special thanks and acknowledgements to everyone who has worked tirelessly to help us get this school year off to a magnificent start. As you know, this was a summer of moving and transition, and for those of us who see school closed and don't interact with school again until it opens in the fall, it can go unnoticed how much work has to be done in order to get the buildings ready for the students to come back. So, our custodial team, the unsung heroes that make this place shine, literally shine, the maintenance workers, child nutrition, they had to shut down a kitchen at the middle school. Maintenance moved over storage space, freezers and refrigerators to increase the food capacity in storage here at the high school. Sheriff Roberts, partnering with him, and Mr. Bruce, and the gentleman that he works with who are incarcerated at this time, but have remarkable trade skills, really helped us a lot this summer. The building administration, excellent collaboration from elementary principals, the middle and high school administration, all working to share, and technology did amazing upgrades to make sure that this campus is able to accommodate the extra internet traffic. Staff onboarding, I want to give a big shout out as well to Ms. Pearson, Human Resources, and the payroll staff. The new teachers came in for new faculty orientation, and within that first day, they all had their laptop, they had their device, they had a password, email address set up. They were able to submit their payroll document, and they were fully inputted into our system the first day that they got here, and that didn't happen by accident. The instructional team, Dr. Hampton and her staff, Ms. Bianco, as well as Ms. Rochelle, just did amazing jobs with helping brand-new people, lesson plans, how do you set up your classroom procedures. Transportation, our bus drivers, people that don't realize this, but our bus and car drivers go through a training every year, and it's more than just highway safety. They had to learn first aid, fire extinguisher safety, learning how to treat students who have seizure disorders with vagus stimulator nerves, nasals, basic vagus nerve stimulator magnets, nasal sprays, first aid. They had to get retrained every year. And returning teachers came in with a positive attitude, ready to learn new things, ready to get retooled, and because of that, we were able to start our first day this week, last Friday, and also, before we got to our first day, also, a big thank you for all of the community's support. I was able to attend the Freeman Community Empowerment Day, and there was a huge outpouring of community support, giving students school supplies, book bags, connecting parents with resources, counseling centers. It's the whole community really showed that they're behind our students, and that makes a big difference. National night out was huge, law enforcement from the town, county, state police, the extension office, the county, everyone really showed our students that we love and support them, and I felt really proud to be a part of that effort. Also, Saturday was the James Solomon Russell History Day, and I heard some amazing stories of alumni from Russell going all the way back to the sixties. If you get a chance to go and look, they have recorded a virtual reality AI walkthrough. Right now, it's just on a screen, but they will be getting VR glasses. So, even though the school was closed, you can actually feel like you're walking the halls of Russell, and that's really neat. The digital histories and the written histories are going to be composed into a multimedia and a printed book. They are still collecting information, so if anyone has not had an opportunity to share their history, please contact the St. Paul's Museum and Archives. Our first day of school, we'd intended for it to be on Thursday, as you know, we did have to cancel, and we opened up on Friday, but it was smiling faces, new sneakers squeaking on the floors, and little kids all wanting to show off their, I was about to say Power Rangers, but that's not what it's called, Paw Patrol. Paw Patrol, and their frozen backpacks, and look at me, I got Ninja Turtles. And if you know me, work with me in school, my very favorite day of school is always graduation, but my second favorite day is the first day of school. So, lots of smiling faces, everyone was excited. Safety, again, it's our primary focus, as long as students and staff, parents are all following school rules and procedures, we'll be fine, and just as a reminder, we will continuously monitor weather conditions. This is a very tricky time of the year, it's hurricane season, and although we've gotten a bit of a reprieve from the heat wave, it's still summer, and the potential for extreme heat presenting dangerous situations always exists. So, parents, please make sure you're getting those alerts and staying tuned into our social media. Facilities projects, just a quick update, the new elementary school is making progress. If you seen from the outside, most of the brickwork is done, but there are things changing inside every week. So, there's an example of a classroom, the casework is going in, and you can see the cubbies where kids will be hanging their jackets and book bags next year. They started to put tile up, and every week you walk in and see something different, but it is on schedule. Also, the traffic plan, this is a big one everyone should know about. We do not have a start date, but the entire community should be aware that school days drive right next to the bus shop, and planners drive really close to the entrance to the school on both sides are going to be shut down, the area in red. VDOT has not yet set the date for when that work is going to begin, but when the water- the water and sewer is connected to the new school for approximately two weeks, there will be a detour map to enter into this area of of the town, because we will not be able to travel down school days and turn on planners near the direction. Um athletic stadium project uh remains on schedule. The RFQ is due soon and um the school board and board of supervisors, small group committees have had some productive meetings this summer and continued to work. So um stay tuned, uh new and information will be coming out that soon as well. And that's it, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Carter.
Dr. Carter, do you have a video of you doing hopscotch at Tatero?
This is from.
Great job.
Alrighty, thank you, Dr. Carter. And next we will have a presentation from Starbase, um an academy presentation. Hello.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chairwoman Seward, Vice Chair Warwick, members of the board, and Dr. Carter. My name's Nicole Johnson, our, and I am the Director for the Starbase Blackstone Academy. And I have along with me Dr. Tara Dunbar, um who is our Deputy Director to help with any questions. We are here to share how our program is inspiring and preparing the next generation of problem solvers and innovators right here in Southside, Virginia. So, what is Blackstone Starbase Academy? We are one of only two Starbase locations in Virginia. Um across the country, there are approximately ninety locations. Our focus is to build enthusiasm for STEAM, science, technology, engineering, art slash design, and math, while also strengthening those critical thinking, problem-solving skills, and building confidence and teamwork amongst our young learners. Our instructors are all Virginia certified and collabor- collectively, we bring over sixty years of experience um working in Title I schools across Southside, Virginia. Our mission and vision, our mission is to expose our youth to real-world technological environments and positive civilian and military role models. We build collaborations between schools, communities, and the Department of Defense by providing twenty-five hours of hands-on instruction that meets or exceeds national standards. Our vision is to be a premier youth outreach program, raising interest in learning, improving knowledge and skills, and building a highly educated, skilled workforce that is ready to meet the advanced technological needs of our nation. Um, how was, how the Starbase program works, um fifth graders from each of the elementary schools will participate in twenty-five hours of immersive, real-world lessons. Um, there are two options for that, um one is one day a week for fi- over the course of five weeks and some locations will do it for five consecutive days in a row. Our lessons all align with Virginia SOLs in math, science, technology, and engineering. Um, teachers attend with their classes. Um, those teachers are able to observe new approaches and gain strategies that they can take back to their classrooms. Um, students are able to engage in a career exploration opportunity component to see how their learning connects to uh future opportunities. Can you skip to the next one? I think I might have, I sent the, I I apologize, I sent the wrong um presentation, I'd condensed it uh down a little bit more. Um, I kind of covered all three of those, so you can skip to the next one. This is just a daily schedule, um they would be there, students would be there from approximately nine to about two. It's flexible when they can arrive and when they can depart depending on individual school division's needs. Can you go to the next one? Um, here are some examples of lessons um and activities that the students would be participating in. Um, a couple of examples that I'll just point out, they would be building molecular models and um exploring Newton's laws in science, uh practicing ratios and geometry and fun and in our interactive ways. Um, we would be able to code robots, do designs, create designs in three D, we have a three D printer, and go through the engineering process. Um, we customize the experience using local SOL data on the skills that students need most that we can target and assist with those um standards of learning assessments. So, the benefits of Starbase, how is that uh unique for each student? Starbase aims to bridge equity gaps by ensuring that our students get high-quality STEAM exposure. They see how learning connects to real careers, including military-connected fields. We work to build partnerships between schools, the community, and the Department of Defense to help prepare a future-ready workforce. So, um, we are thrilled that Blackstone has been chosen as one of the newest locations for this program and we are very excited, we've been working with local school divisions. Um, we have targeted uh Nottaway, Amelia, Lunenburg, Brunswick, Prince Edward, and Dinwiddie Counties to serve, as our service area. We cannot wait to see our students' confidence and skills grow. If you can dream it, the Starbase team can build it. At this time, I'd love to hear your thoughts or any questions that you may have about the program. I condensed it down, I could talk for a couple of hours, but I know that you all don't have that time in your schedule, and Dr. Dunbar is here to help me answer any questions that you might have.
I don't have any questions, you know, I was over the other day.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm so excited, I'm just like a kid myself and I think, and I hope Dr. Carter, we will have some fifth graders, hopefully we can transport them there, so.
Absolutely.
I would like to come over and just view students in um progress, so I think it's awesome.
Absolutely, we welcome guests at any time, just give us a little heads up, the building's locked, so I can let you in. Um, the only cost to the division would be the cost of transportation. Students would be required to bring their lunches with them. Um, but the the program is a hundred percent federally reimbursed, it's federally funded from the Department of Defense through the Civil and Youth Programs, portion of the DOD.
Is this for fifth grade students?
Yes, ma'am, they found that fifth grade is the best grade to target students before they enter that middle and, that secondary, middle and high school years um to create that, that instill that love of STEAM, um and and hopefully focus on that STEM path.
And it sounds like it's aligned with the Virginia Five Cs, if I heard correct.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am, the critical thinking, the collaboration, yes, ma'am, it does incorporate those. And again, we are also um eh would lo- love to have SOL data so that we can ensure that if there's areas that need more reinforcement, um that we target those areas, because we're we're very aware of, um myself and the two instructors are all um Virginia teachers. We all taught right here in Southside, Virginia. And we're very aware of those, the stress of the SOL test. Um, you know, it is, it's just something that we have to deal with, there has to be some sort of accountability. Um, but we want to do everything that we can um to help these, help our students in this community as much as we can.
I think I have two questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the first question is how many slots it is, um I guess per school district? And then my second question is, is how long do you have the funding for this project?
Um, there is no limit to the number of slots. Um, we are an in- inclusive program and we would like for all students in fifth grade um to participate. Um, I can't dictate that to you, but um you know, we want that opportunity for all the students and we have the capacity. Um, I I know I talked to Dr. Carter and we met with um Dr. Hampton to meet, to have all fifth grade students in Bruntow County participate. Um, the funding has been, this this program was established in the early nineteen nineties. Um, it was actually originally established through a grant and then it moved into being appropriated through Congress. So I do not foresee the, I foresee it continuing on. It's been been going strong since early, around nineteen ninety-two, I believe, and it's continued to grow. Um, they are looking to add new locations, um you know, throughout the, I think we had five last year, new locations across the country and we were very fortunate to have um the second location here in Virginia. The first location, I don't think I mentioned this, is in Winchester. Um, I can also be glad to send out some, you know, links to their their we- their site to show you some of the things that they do. And then there's also a annual report that goes out to Congress that gives a little more information. Um, I'll be glad to send a link to that annual report also. I think I might have sent it in the first email to you, Dr. Carter, I I may not have. I've talked to a bunch of school districts and a bunch of principals, so.
That's awesome, and then also, will there be any summer programs along with the school year as well?
Yes, ma'am, um we are, a couple of things we're required to to do with this program. Um, we're required to, since we have one classroom, provide two weeks of summer programming. We were able to do that this summer. Um, we had a week in June and a week in July. Um, we had students from, we actually had students from Nottaway and Lunenburg mostly attend, um but we also opened it up to um employees of the Department of Military Affairs. And we had military-dependent families attend also. Um, we had a great mix of of rural and we had even one of our our full-time employees in in the readiness center where we are housed um on Route forty, um he brought his children, because he only has them during the summer, so they came. They were from Virginia Beach, so the kids got a little taste of some some urban, some, you know, city, city kids coming um with them and which we're not used to around here. Um, but it was, we have two weeks of programming. Uh, we were very fortunate, one of the um school districts provided transportation. Um, so they had like a centralized, um centralized location that they met in the county and they transported them to Starbase. So, I don't, they didn't go door-to-door and pick up, but they did have a centralized location to provide that opportunity, because you know, some of our families aren't able to do that, aren't able to get to Blackstone. Um, so that's an opportunity. And also, we're required to do outreach throughout the course of the school year. Um, and that outreach can look like a diff- a couple of different things. It can be as simple as judging a science fair to coming to a STEM fair. Um, Dr. Carter and Dr. Hampton and my team have already discussed providing some staff development. Um, so we are actually working on providing that, um getting to get, getting that together for the first staff development day on, uh I believe it's in November, Election Day, I don't know the exact date, but that is on our radar and we are working hard. Um, because not only are we a resource for the children to come to us, but we are a resource for the school divisions and the teachers within the school divisions.
Thank you. Well, you took my question, so.
Again, I want to thank you for the presentation, um again, very insightful. Um, I heard about your program prior to you even presenting tonight.
Okay.
From a fellow board member, she was super, super excited as she sat in on. I don't think she would get off the phone. Again, she was so excited about the program, so I was definitely looking forward to hearing what you had to present today. So one of the questions I have is, what is the eligibility requirement for the students who may be interested in the program?
Um, like I said, it's inclusive, there's no, there's no, it, we target all students. Um, they do, when they open a new location, they do look at socioeconomic, they look at Title I schools. Um, so uh we are, of course, you know, those schools that don't have all the resources necessarily. They look at rural divisions that don't have the, you know, resources that an urban location would have.
And then the last question I think I have is, I know we can either do it five straight days or one day for five weeks. So how would the students make up or would this be credited towards their seat time or classroom hours?
Seat time is, I I will, correct me if I'm wrong, because I've always been elementary, seat time is counted in high school, right? So, um it would be a matter of, and and we could help teachers with this, working on how to make up that time. Um, I would probably, if I was in a school building, eh and we haven't, I have, I'm just off the cuff on this, what I would do, um take it, work it out to where the students are basically with that, with it, in that rotation, they're only missing certain things. Um, I personally think coming five days in a row, they're they're missing too big of a chunk of the, of reading and math. Um, I like the once a week for five weeks in a row model. Um, we also are incorporating in, um I I eh eh at my heart and core, I'm I'm a reading teacher. That's what I I did for for a number of years. Um, so, you know, there are, they have literacy is built in with, it's just them reading di- different problems and solving real-world application things. Um, the math is built in, uh math is built into pretty much every lesson. We might be doing a science lesson on, um you know, or an experimental design on Newton's, on Egbert, but then there's a math component to that where they actually have to purchase their items that they're going to use in their um design and their build, um once they created that. So we work um to, you know, instill those SOLs cross-curricularly. We, of course, would work with the teachers to ensure um share what SOLs we're covering so that they can make sure that they note that um and make documentation of what is covered at Starbase. Um, but for the most part, I would, you know, work a schedule around like this group's here, Group A is here on Monday, and then kind of have that activity, you know, built in. I could lay it out a little bit better, I'm not explaining, I'm not explaining it well, but I do have an idea in my head how you would kind of rotate the lessons through, the kids through. Um, and I think right now, honestly, y'all are, y'all haven't opened the bigger school, the the combined elementary school. I think it'll be easier working with each individual school and and this year, and then we'll kind of have more of a a I guess, a battle rhythm, so to speak. I'm starting to learn military talk, being around so many military folks, which is very, it's very uh awesome that the students can interact with some of the military, full-time military people that are on staff there and really see how, you know, what they're learning in school, they use on an everyday basis.
And we decided to move forward with this, how soon would this program start or?
Um, it could start as soon as the end of October. Um, we have one school district already on the books, I'm I'm probably going to have another one um on the books here soon and and then the start date after that would be December. And second semester has not filled up yet.
Is this something that we would have to vote on or do you just, how do, how would we move forward on this?
Um, you want me to answer that? The the, there would be an MOU, um so memorandum of understanding between our location and um Bruntow County Schools that the superintendent would sign. Um, at any time with notice, that could be, you know, changed, amended, or um, you know, ceased. But hopefully we don't foresee, I I I'm hoping that, you know, they'll be so excited about it, because I know in other locations across the country, um when they don't have enough slots for the, for the school districts, everybody's antsy, they want to get their spot, because it is such a great program. The equipment is premier, um the, I didn't really talk too much about that, but the iPads, you know, everything's up to date. We have iPads, we have computers, they have a CAD program that they'll use called On Shape. Um, you were, you saw some of our equipment when when you got to visit. Um, it is really a premier program and they do stress keeping up with the techno- technological changes and ensuring that we are on the uh the cusp of of, you know, that, to make sure that they are getting the most advanced lessons. And of course, tying them all back to the standards.
I'm good.
So you're based out of Fort Pickett?
Yes, ma'am, we're actually, we're not on base, we're in the armory, right there on Route forty, right beside the bowling alley.
Okay.
Um, so there is, you don't have to come on base. Um, there is a component of the uh program where they do an hour to two hours worth of career exploration and there may be a time where we would have to coordinate with the buses to take them on base to 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 visit a location. Um, but of course, the only person that would need to be ID'd was the the bus driver um in that situation. But typically, they're they're on the, in the, on the readiness center with us.
So basically, you just send a MOU to superintendent, then do what you need to do and you can share it with us.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, any more question, board members?
Amen.
Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, and if something comes up in the meantime, please feel free to reach out. I am definitely, um, like I said, I believe in the program, I believe in 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 empowering students and giving them the best that we can give them.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Have a safe trip back.
Alrighty, moving right along with the agenda, we're going to move down to our citizens' comments. Um, and we do want to start off this year by saying to our citizens, if it concerns you all, it definitely concerns this board. So we appreciate each and every one of you with your comments. Ms. Claire? At this time, matters may be publicly brought to the attention of the board and administration. Public comments at board meetings are just one of many avenues for communication and the board recognizes and appreciates the importance of input from and communication with the public we represent. The public is allowed up to three minutes at most meetings to express their views. Please respect that time limitation, it will be enforced. Please understand that it may not be possible to immediately respond to questions. As a reminder, it is imperative at a public meeting is in, it is inappropriate at a public meeting to make personal attacks, to be defamatory, or to disparage individuals or identifiable groups. Again, we welcome and appreciate your input. Cedric Hargrove Jr.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening Cedric.
My name is Cedric Hargrove Jr. I'm a sixth grader at Red Oak St. Elementary School and I really want the chance to play sports at the elementary level. Sports are a big part of my life, but so is school. I work hard, I work hard in the classroom and I know I can keep my grades up while being part of a team. If I could get, if I get this opportunity, I'll give a hundred percent, whether it's at practice, during a game, or in the classroom. I know it takes responsibility and balance and I'm ready to do both. Thank you for your time tonight, I hope you, I hope I get to show you what I can do, thank you.
Thank you Cedric. Darius Easter Senior.
Darius Easter Senior.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just wanted to touch bases on what Cedric was saying. I coach for the middle school and also coach for the youth league. I have a lot of kids that can't play youth league because of their size and their weight. So playing middle school sports give them the opportunity to still get discipline from the coaches and still be able to play sports that they love. And another thing, if time is a problem, as us coaches, we can also move practice back, have a study hall, do what we need to do and wait for those kids from the elementary school. That's pretty much all.
Thank you. Corey Davis.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I stand here, I coach at the private school as well as the public school at the ranks of middle school JV and varsity. At the private school, my daughter, which is a, a rising sixth grader at Red Oak, is always asked, because she's about tall as me. She's always asked, why don't you play over here? Why don't you play over here? And over at the private school, you could play middle school basketball or softball in the fifth grade or whatnot. So with her being in sixth grade, it came to me as, why didn't I take her over there if she didn't get the option to play this year? And I didn't want to take her from her friends and great educators that she, she's had through the school years or whatnot. I don't want to take her from that or whatnot. So just asking if at all possible to just let the kids play this year. That's all we're asking. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Andrea Hawkins.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Andrea Hawkins. This is my son, Jordan O'Day. Jordan aged out this year at the youth league. So usually I'm all around. I'm all around Brunswick County. I volunteer. I do a lot. So this year he aged out. And for me, what football, what football does with Jordan is, Jordan, I think every school know Jordan. So he's Miss Brown right now, but he was a Maher and Powdy Eagle at one time. Jordan behaviors, he's active. He's very active. But from August to November, when he's playing football, his energy is down. So for, for me, for him, I know during that time that when he's playing sports, he's, he's not getting in trouble. So it's more to me for knowing that, his energy, like I said, taking him, and I'm a working parent, seeing parents, so it's hard for, to take him somewhere else and he's right here at home. So I have talked to the coaches just as well for Russell. They have study hall from two forty-five to, I think, three forty-five or four o'clock. So they said they will wait for the kids. And he's into terror, so it won't be no problem me get him there. And I'm willing a parent to help others because I work a night shift. So I get off at seven o'clock, eight o'clock in the morning. So I'm willing to help parents that they need to get a ride, get their children there, to get to practice however it is. But we just want a chance to play. He need to burn his energy off so he can learn.
Lakeisha Hill.
Good evening.
My ear clawed off, so if I get loud, just say, you got a louse up in here. But I'm here to speak on as well as the other parents. I'm a coach at Russell Middle School. And I'm just all for the kids. Not only do I coach the kids, I train them, I model them, I give them discipline, I counsel them. And to have so many kids reach out to me and I've had a few to shed tears on my shoulder, it hurts. It hurt as a parent, even though, you know, my kids a little older, but everybody know the kids call me Mama Keisha. They call me Coach Keisha. And they look up to me and, you know, just to see these kids hurt by not being able to play, you know, like the previous coach said, some of them waited out or they, you know, over, overweight and couldn't play at the, uh, the Brunswick, you know, the youth, the youth football league that we have in the, here in the county, you know, and it just hurt. Like they say, I don't mind. Study hall, I'm all about grades, then the athletic. Academic is always important to me. So, you know, I don't, I don't graduate, you know, went to college, got a degree. So, you know, have, having the opportunity to, to help them, to have study hall or, you know, just to, you know, push practice time back. I don't mind helping the kids out at all. And, you know, I'm just staying here today to ask you all to please take it into consideration to, you know, just give them at least a chance to play at that level. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That completes the sign-up sheet. Alrighty. We don't have a student rep, right?
No, there's some information about it.
You want to do that? Thank you all again for your citizens' comments. They are heard and they have not fallen on deaf ears. We appreciate you all. Dr. Carter, we'll move right into our student representatives or information on student representatives.
Yes, ma'am. So board members, if you'll look under that item, there are two pieces of information. One of them is policy. BB, BB, just for your reference, we already have a policy which allows the school board to have a student representative if the school board desires. And then the second document is a handbook from the VSBA that has sample information, guidelines for boards, ways to set expectations and define the role of a student representative. And several school divisions, I reached out to other schools in Region Eight. Some of them have student reps. Some of them do not. And my question for you all is that this is on the agenda because it's been something that the school board members or selected members have shown an interest in. And is there a desire for us to research this further? And also to find out if we want to research it, how would you like the selection process to be handled? Some schools have had elections where a student was elected amongst their peers, usually a high school junior or senior. And in other cases, they've had students get recommendations and then those recommendations go to the principal. Principal vets them and then the school board actually interviews selected representatives and selects a representative. And then in other cases, there have been school boards that have selected, now, I think this applies to school divisions with multiple high schools. And they want to make sure that students from all their different schools. But there are also some models where the board has a different rep almost every month, just a different member, so that multiple kids get that opportunity. So I wanted to find out through conversation with you all the night, what your preferences were as we look into this process.
Well, I think it'd be a good idea. I think it would be a very good idea to have a student rep. And I'm going to leave it up to you to make the decision as to how. I would say maybe let their peers select them or maybe, I don't know the other way you could do it. So that, that'd be up to you, but it'll be good. Because I think when I first came on, there was or had been, but no longer. And I always thought, you know, we should have always had a, a student representative to help us out and let us know what's going on with the students at school. So, good idea.
Yes, I think it's a phenomenal, great idea. It's one of the things that when I first was elected on this board, I've been asking about for a while. So I'm super excited to hear that you brought this forth to us. So thank you.
You know, I think that this is a, definitely a great idea to bring him and introduce him to leadership as well and kind of seeing how governing boards work. And I think it is, being common to find us to continue to lead and guide and role model the behaviors in which we would like for them to continue to see. As well as, I think that, I like the idea of those, those individuals serving for a period of at least one year, so that way they can kind of get the full experience. And then switch, you know, switch out the next, the following year.
Yeah, actually, Ms. Clary just pointed it to my attention. The current policy states that the principal of the high school would nominate two students from the school to serve as the student representative to the school board. From these nominations, the superintendent selects the student representative, subject to final approval by the school board. The representative serves for a one-year term. So if you're in agreement, we can continue to work on that model. That would not require any policy updates.
I'm in agreement.
I'm good with that.
And we're looking at starting in, you're looking at possible starting in January or?
I would have to talk with Dr. Thornhill and see how quickly they would be able to start that process to start, you know, making selections and making sure that we have a, a fair way to make sure it's a, a process where we don't just pick someone today, but pick the best person. And also, I think we also need to look at the, the roles and the model that you want the student to do, have clear expectations. So I, I would say it'll take at least two months to iron out the details.
I like what Mr. Perrier said. They'll give us from now to the end of the year. The selection process can still move forward, but I think we should, year to year will be perfect. Be a good way to keep up with it. I like that suggestion.
And I like your suggestion about, you know, at least two months so we can get them started as soon as possible, maybe like November. And I do believe they also attend the, the conference as well, if I'm not mistaken. I think, yeah, they attend this conference, I was at conference in November. So that, that way they get there and get some feedback and see how we operate.
Alrighty. Thank you, Dr. Carter. Thank you, board members. Next, we're going to move to Ms. Pearson with, fun with policy updates. Can't get enough of policy.
Good evening, Board Chair Ms. Seward, Vice Chair Mr. Ward, Board Members. Dr. Carter and the greater Brunswick community. Before you are several policies that are listed. A few of these are for information. I'm going to talk a little bit about them. As we know, on July the ninth of twenty twenty-four, Governor Glenn Youngkin issued the cell phone-free learning environments. At that time, school divisions were given that guidance under that executive order to develop a plan. That's what we did in Brunswick. We use the Yonder pouches at the, at the middle and the high school level. But since then, the Virginia School Board Association has given actual policy guidance that we need to be in compliance with. So I have been working with our legal team, which is why you have Policy JKPC, Cell Phone Free Learning Environments, presented as a first read with a request for approval in the September meeting. The biggest change with this is that students would no longer be held accountable underneath the rule of out-of-school suspension as a consequence for cell phone usage. Policy JKPC dash R is the regulation that is presented for information only. Policy IKFAR, Locally Awarded Verified Credits, is presented for information only as a regulation. As well as KBAR, which is the Request for Public Record Regulation, presented for information only. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, moving along with our agenda, we will move to Mrs. Clary with our finance report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This letter represents the BCPS fiscal year twenty-five expenditure and revenue monthly summary. The fiscal year twenty-five revenues and expenditures as of July the thirty-first, according to the Bright system, indicates that we've expended twenty-seven point four million dollars from our categorical budget and received a total of twenty-four point nine in revenues. BP, BCPS will continue to accrue incoming revenue. The fiscal year twenty-five budget was created on an ADM of one thousand three hundred and ten and we ended the year with one thousand three hundred and ten. We continue to be in contact with the Brunswick County Finance Department to monitor and record incoming revenue accruals, which we will do through the end of September. Currently, we have about two point six million in revenues coming in between now and the end of September.
We're not forecasting any deficit or anything, correct?
No, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next is an increase in adult price breakfast and lunch. Mrs. Crutchfield, the Child Nutrition Supervisor, is recommending to increase the adult breakfast to three dollars and the adult lunch to five dollars to be in compliance with regulations that are set by the USDA. She's requesting action, approval under action items.
Just curious, what is it now? I, I hate to put you, I'm just curious. And if you don't have it, that's fine.
It's in the information that she sent.
Four fifty, isn't it? It goes up every year.
Okay.
Every year there's an increase.
And that is for action.
Yes.
Next up, we have our overnight field trips. Dr. Carter, well, they're not at this time. Okay. Agenda preparation for our upcoming meetings. We have a regular board meeting, next scheduled regular, regular board meeting, September eighth at six PM right here in this building.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any joint meetings with the board of supervisors coming up?
Not at, this, not a scheduled one.
Okay.
Thank you. As we all know, our committees, we meet, attempt to meet at least every month. Are there any updates, finance, facilities, anything you want to share?
Facilities, yes. We had, we did have a productive meeting with the Small Facilities Committee of the Board of Supervisors, where they were afforded an opportunity to tour the middle high school complex as well as go over to the new school site. They were very impressed with the number of renovations and changes we did upstairs for the middle school, as well as they saw some, identified some potential areas of improvement, which we are currently working on a project list for the gym to ensure that those areas are properly serviced, because that is going to be a commonly and highly used area as well. As well as they had opportunity to tour the new school. And I think they were very impressed with just the progress that's being made right now with the new school. I think, you know, kind of built some excitement there, so.
We could use some.
We will be meeting again very shortly. I think it's August twenty-fourth or so, where we expect to get the RFQs back and kind of go from there.
Alrighty, thank you. Appreciate it. Alright, now we're moving to our action items. So, board members, I will entertain a motion to approve the child nutrition adult meal increase as presented.
Madam Chair, I motion to approve the child nutrition adult meal price increase as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It has been approved and it has been motioned and properly second that we approve the child nutrition adult meal price increase. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next, we will move down to our policy approvals. And there's quite a few policies that we need to approve. I will entertain a motion that we approve the policies as listed.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the policies as listed.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has, it has been motioned and properly second that we approve the policies as listed. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. I will entertain a motion that we approve the minutes from June ninth, June tenth, and June thirtieth meetings.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the minutes from June ninth, June tenth, and June thirtieth meeting as presented.
Second.
It has been motioned and properly second that we approve the minutes from our June ninth, tenth, and thirtieth meeting. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. I will entertain a motion that we approve the bills as presented.
Madam Chair, I had an opportunity to review the bills for the month and I would like to call for a motion to approve the bills as presented.
Second.
It has been motioned and properly second that we approve the bills for the month. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next up for approval is the personnel list. I will entertain a motion that we approve the personnel list as presented.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the personnel agenda as presented.
Second.
It has been, uh, motioned and properly second that we approve the personnel list as presented. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As have it, the motion carries. Next, we will move down to extracurricular activities for our sixth graders. I will entertain a motion that we approve the middle school extracurricular activities for sixth grade students with parents providing transportation.
Madam Chair, I call for a motion to approve middle school extracurricular activities for sixth grade students with parents providing transportation.
Second.
It has been motioned and second second that we approve the middle school extracurricular activities for our sixth grade students with parents providing transportation.
You call for discussion.
Is there any discussion that needs to be had before we officially?
And I know one of the things we kind of talked about as well, because it's definitely trying to, you know, the parents being able to transport, but if we can continue to explore. um, being able to transport. But if we can continue to explore ways in which we as a division can provide transportation, that would be great as well. Because we understand that some parents may not be able to, um, provide transportation. So if we can, I'm all for that as well. So just continue to explore those options.
Alright, we will definitely continue to explore those, um, possibilities. But right now, the motion is that the parents, it is approved with the parents providing transportation.
Indeed.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposed? The motion carries. Alright. Next, we will move down to our board comments. Board members. Um, first.
No, I was just.
I just wanted to, um, just thank the fellow board for, um, with us agreeing for the kids to, um, participate in the extracurricular activities. I think that is so wonderful that they have that opportunity. So thank you, fellow board members. Um, and I just want to wish all the administrators and all the students, um, a wonderful, um, school year. And what else do I have? It's almost time for football. I'm excited about that. And, um, I will be having a town hall meeting, um, for District Two on Saturday that's coming up at ten o'clock, uh, for District Two for the Powhatan District. So if you would like to come out, it's just general conversation. Um, and I'm looking forward to hosting that along with the board of supervisors, um, District Two, um, member, the Honorable Tyler, Welton Tyler. So Powhatan District, you're invited. Make sure you share with your fellow, um, fellow parents, fellow students. Uh, I invited the administrators also. If you want to come out, you can. The invitation has been sent out and any staff that would like to come out as well. Thank you.
I'm gonna step in. I just wanted to say first, um, I attended the education, um, conference. And I did attend a number of, um, sessions, but the one that stood out the most would be the Geraltive A I. So I do have a booklet here I want to share with you, um, Mr. Mays, and I also have one for you, Dr. Carter. And I also attended the one that you had too. So I'm going to say what they said, um, at the, um, session, the conference. A I is now, it's not the future. So I would like, I should say aye. We as a board, but then I too want to see as many of our teachers as possible use A I as well as the students. So, um, because I'm trying to use it myself, and I use it a little bit. I'm gonna tell you like a friend told me, she said, she uses A I chat, G P T, because she is done with thinking. So I'm gonna be the same way. I'm gonna be done with thinking and let that think for me. So I do have this book. And, um, also with the Starbase, um, information for the students, I'm all for that because that is, I like, um, my background is dealing with technology. So I do love technology. If I don't use it all, it's there. And I try to learn to use it. And also to wish all the new teachers and the teachers that are present here now, I hope you have a great year with the students, you know, and I'll try to do what I can. And the bus, okay. And the bus drivers, okay. Have a great year. Be safe. Okay. And that's it.
Um, as for me, again, I just want to say welcome back. Um, I know that over the summer as well as over the summer as well as the beginning of the school year, had opportunity to interface with a number of the staff as well as the students. And just to see the level of enthusiasm. I know for some of them, it didn't seem like there was a break. Uh, because I know there are a number of times where I kind of came through on the weekends, even walk, walked through the schools on the weekend to see that people were still working from moving furniture for the transition, for to the, uh, summer camps, as well as just getting prepared for the new school year. So that's a true testament to the commitment that even in cases where you weren't getting paid, you were still out there working for the students. And we really, really do appreciate that. And we're excited about the new school year. Seemed like it was just yesterday that we were basically saying, how soon is, I mean, how quick this year has passed? But this is a major transition year for our division. As again, we're preparing to close three elementary schools, I think. Tetero says it's a final remix of celebrating sixty years, as well as looking at the old school pitchers that Marin Powhatan kicked back, as well as Ray Ostergen, to see that on the pride that they had kicking off the school year, knowing that this is the final year that new schools will be operating. It speaks to the level of enthusiasm they continue to bring despite to know that this is the end and we're all about to consolidate. But bringing us back, um, closer together as a community and as a division. Um, and then to see the smooth transition at the middle school. Anybody knows, um, I'm a kind of hands-on person. And if there's a project that's happening that we're directly involved in, I walk through it often. I think I walked through the middle school, I don't know how many times over the summer, almost every other week, just to kind of see where we stood. And to see on the first day of school that it was a smooth transition, you know, seventh graders were in the, um, gym, I mean, in auditorium, checking on the vaccination records. Eighth grades, it was orientation upstairs. Um, and seeing administrators actively involved. Again, that tells you that the strategic planning that took place in the times in which we were, you know, closing the school year and going into the new year. So I just want to say how much we appreciate that. Want to encourage you to continue to do well. We're here to support. Um, if there's anything you need, just let, oh, just know that we are here for you. As well as want to kind of mention, um, just the level of involvement from our administrators, as well as seeing Dr. Carter, I think, at a number of events as well. And had opportunity for National Night Out to sit right beside, um, our administrative team and passing out, um, back to school supplies. And I don't know, Ms. Oh, Ms. Bianco, with that level of energy that she brought and engaging every one of the students. I said, I even said, I said, Ms. Bianco was going to throw her hip out of place, you know. But, you know, but again, she was dancing, but they also enjoying the moment. Um, and then that didn't finish there. After that, they went over to the high school, prepared for the P D for the next day. So again, your work, your hard work do not go unnoticed. So we really appreciate that. And then lastly, the athletic committee, we donated water to the band as well as to the, um, high school athletic program. We're going to take care of the middle school as well to make sure that during this hot weather season, you have the proper nutrients as well as you stay hydrated. Alright?
Thank you. Uh, for me, I, I'm sorry. Very rare have I ever heard the school board get applauded. So thank you for that. I really appreciate that. That is unusual. I'll joke, I really enjoyed the school tour to see the remodeling at the high school and the middle school. And to see the new elementary school, to me, that's really exciting. You know, but nothing is no more important than the safety of the children or students, the safety of the employees. So most of all, hoping pray for a safe year and a very productive learning year. And I have one hundred percent confidence in both of them. And just thank you, Eric, for the way those things happen is by the hard work of everybody. The hard work of the people that work with the schools, the hard work of the students, of course, the administrators. So just thank you all for what you do. I really appreciate everything.
I think a round of applause means we're starting off our year of excellence on the right foot. Um, and I sit here, I hear, always hear, especially at the beginning of the school year, I always hear Honor Horse Shack. And some of you all, little people don't know who that is. And some of you littler, uh, middle-aged people may not know who that is. But every time I talk to Dr. Carter, I'm always saying, hello, Dr. Carter. And I could just hear Honor Horse Shack in the back of my mind, Mr. Carter. I am already enjoying this school year because I see the hard work that has gone that you all have put in throughout the summer. Um, and for some of you all, I know you probably haven't really had a summer. Um, I've seen that smiling face of Ms. Pearson almost every week in the email that says, we got new staff. And I'm like, yeah, keep it up. She has been on her business. She has been about her business, um, definitely getting the people in here. Um, it's just a sign of the times. Like, people come and people go, but the greatness stays. And the greatness is Brunswick County. And the greatness is the excellence that we bring to Brunswick County. And the greatness is our teachers, our staff, our community, our board members. Um, it is just Brunswick County. It's something about Brunswick County. Um, God's spot of the world, people just don't know it. It's best kept secret ever. I say to you all, what you do does not go unnoticed. Sometimes it feels like it is so thankless and that we don't, can't thank you enough. Um, and there is an old adage that says, if I had ten thousand tongues, I couldn't thank you enough. Truly, if I had ten thousand tongues, I couldn't thank you all enough for what you do. When I go into the school year, I get a little full. Especially when I look at somebody like Keisha Hill, who, if she's there fighting for the kids, you got to fight on your hands. Because she is a true fighter. But I also get full when I think about my sister, who was an educator. Second year that they have been without her, without greatness in their school. So I know what it is to lose, but I also know what it is that God sends somebody else, sends another angel in that place. So I say to you all, continue to be the angels that God send you. Continue to fight for your babies. Continue to stand strong. I'm moving, always abounding in what you do. Feeling like as a parent, this is what I gotta do. And as the board, they'll figure it out later. That's right. That is absolutely right. Because I've sat in that seat as well. Sitting in that seat as a fighter. And I sit on this side of the seat as a fighter, still fighting for our kids, still fighting for the same purpose, still fighting for the same cause. Um, and that is inspiring our kids and letting our kids get to that next level. And helping our kids get to that next level, whatever it is. And even pushing people like a Jew and a preacher to say, hey, come on and ride the bus for that, drive that bus for us one more time. Because we appreciate what you bring. And we appreciate the energy. And we know about the fight. And we know where that fight comes from. So I say to you all again, thank you. We appreciate you, and this is going to be a year of excellence. With that being said, I will entertain a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
A second.
Meeting adjourned. All in favor?
It's love, it's luck. You ready to go, Miss Love?
Mr. Mays?